So, Mr. Clerk, if you could begin the meeting, please.
Yes.
I'm working through some technical issues that I'm having and Clerk's having. We'll just have one of the IT techs visit. Counselor Bezzol Allen is having an issue, too. So, Counsel, before we get the meeting going, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and recognize the recent loss of Cage Fowler. Cage's story, his family's story, and his family's dedication and his inspiration and strength was a story that really took the community and grabbed attention. I think it was something that showed a really strong side, as you say, where the Fowler family was in grave difficult circumstances, and I know that they felt very supported by the people. I want to recognize the people's kindness and respect. I want to draw attention to it. But I specifically want to just say to Mandy and Paul that although we can't know the depth of their loss, but I know we're here for them and I can support them. I was having a meeting with the force for the weekend, and every September, we have, since I've been there, declared September Child for Cancer Awareness Month. And we've done that with enormous number of families of children with cancer. We certainly intend to do that again this year, and we pick a day and we raise a flag in recognition of all the children that we've lost to cancer and recognition of all the children that are fighting cancer and who have survived it. And the vast community of people who joined us here and raised that flag and graciously accepted that invitation to see each other. So, I just wanted to acknowledge the strength and example that our family sets upon when we acknowledge that Cage was very inspiring.
So, Mr. Clerk, if you could begin the meeting, please.
Mr. Grand Members of Counsel, just so Counsel's aware, it will take a few minutes yet before we have electronic voting up and running. Under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by Counselors Christian and Gardie, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2019-05-21 be approved?
All in favor. Carry.
Under Agenda Item 3, Declarations of Piquinary Interest?
Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was the addendum, the PUC matter, 5.6, the PUC acquisition. It's just a delegation, but I'm in conflict on that because they are climbing my law fur.
Yep. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Under Agenda Item 4, Approve Agenda As Presented, a motion by Counselors Christian and Scott, resolved that the agenda and addendum for 2019-06-03, city council meeting as presented, be approved?
All in favor? Carry. Counselor Christian, you had a comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to take this opportunity, as a teacher at Quora, to send out a notice to the public regarding Quora. This June 13th, Quora Collegiate is holding its eighth annual Relay for Life event at Quora. They're hoping to have 200 participants and over 50 teacher-student volunteers, and their fundraising target this year is another $30,000, which, if they achieve that, that'll bring their grand total over the eight years to over $130,000, which is quite an achievement. Quora, as I've said in the past, is one of the few schools in the province that holds their own Relay for Life event, so I hope everybody can get out there and support it. In addition, they're having a Relay for Life Car Wash at Great Lakes Honda on Saturday, June 8th, and there's a pasta dinner that's available for anybody that's interested on June 13th, prior to the Relay for Life event. That's at Quora, and it's $15, so hopefully everybody can get out and support that very worthwhile effort. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk? Oh, sorry. Yes, Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't congratulate you on the birth of your new daughter last week.
Thank you.
So, congratulations to you, Kylie, Chloe, and...
Isla.
Isla, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council, before we get into the delegations proper, perhaps we'll take the one on the addendum because it will be a short one, and that is the PUC announcement. And Rob Brewer, President and CEO of the PUC, is here to make that announcement.
Welcome to council, Mr. Brewer.
Thank you very much. So, it's a big day for PUC.
It is.
Good evening. As I'm sure you've heard, today's an exciting day for us, and we thank for the city. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to be able to answer any questions that you may have concerning the newest member of the PUC Group of Companies. So, on May 31st, last Friday, PUC Inc. officially acquired Northern Waterworks Inc., or NWI for short. This acquisition is significant for us as it expands our reach into a large part of northwestern Ontario. And moreover, this purchase is consistent with our strategic plan to try and grow the utility. And after all, we recognize that exploring new business ventures is the best way to ensure that we not only increase our returns to you, our shareholder, but we grow and add value as a community-owned asset. So, a little bit on NWI's history. Company was formed in 1997 with a focus on water and wastewater operations, similar to what PUC does here in the Sioux. And since that time, NWI's footprint has grown, stretching from Marathon all the way to Red Lake. And currently, they manage over $400 million in assets for communities all across northwestern Ontario. Wanted to recap some of the highlights from the announcement this morning and what it means for PUC. The acquisition's a tremendous opportunity for us. It gives us a competitive advantage as we work to expand our business outside of the historical footprint here in the Algoma region. And on top of the expansion into market in northwestern Ontario, the purchase also allows us to pursue First Nations contracts with a company that has an established 20-year reputation, working with First Nations and providing water and wastewater services to municipal and industrial clients as well. So, PUC's been working on this acquisition for almost a year now, and throughout that time, we've done extensive due diligence to ensure that this move was right for PUC, right for the community, and I'm delighted to say that it checks both boxes. So, the purchase not only supports PUC's strategic growth objectives, but it also provides a sound investment for our shareholder, the city. And I think it's necessary to also note that, as AWI will continue operating as a standalone company, this purchase does not affect any of our ratepayers. So, with this purchase, the PUC Group of Companies has become the second-largest provider in Ontario of water and wastewater operation services. And so, with that, I'm happy to take any questions, if Counsel may. Any question, counsel? I think you're all very familiar with this. We made sure as we went along the process that you were. Do we have any questions for Mr. Brewer? Seeing none, Counselor Christian, before I make comments, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Well, I just, I want to thank Mr. Brewer. I certainly want to acknowledge, as has been done in the past, the board. My time on the PUC is one of drastic change, and it's a very dynamic environment now, and there are a lot of good things happening. This is a prime example of it, so it's a good moment for PUC and it's a good moment for the city itself.
Yes. So, I'd like to just reiterate Counselor Christian's appreciation to both the executive management team at PUC, as led by you, Mr. Brewer, and also to the Board of Directors, led by Jim Bonifero. A few years ago, we set out to drive value to the company. We thought the company represented a great opportunity for our community to create economy in our community and to bring value to our community, and we were looking for ways to grow the company and to create revenues that were not necessarily revenues we generated in our own rate base. So, it is exceptional that we can say today that we are now the second-largest service provider for water, wastewater in the province of Ontario. And these type of projects take time, and they take effort, and you have the announcement, and it's a good news story, but before that announcement comes to pass, there's lots of work that's done. So, I want to recognize the people that contributed to that, and I think that we're at a really exciting time at the PUC, and I'm confident the PUC is going to continue to be an important asset for our community as we move forward, and it's going to help us leverage more investment and opportunity in our community. So, I thank you, Mr. Brewer, for seeing this transaction to its conclusion. And like Jim and I said to you today, you can enjoy the next couple of days, and you got to get back to work. And we hope to continue to grow and create a dynamic company there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate all the support we've got here. All the best. Mr. Clerk?
Our delegation under 5.1, Queen Street Cruise Committee, Joe Bichelli and Gary Turnbinski and Josh Ingram are in attendance.
Welcome to council, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity once again of coming before you. This is our fourth year, and I've got to tell you that if you told me four years ago that we would have this kind of run and the success that we've had with the Queen Street Cruise, I wouldn't have believed it. Just by way of background, last year, we had the good fortune of having a cruise ship come on, come along, and as a consequence, by happenstance, they showed up at the Queen Street Cruise, a significant number of those passengers, and they were just astounded that that event was going on, and they hadn't received any information about that. So, this year, I understand that we will have a cruise ship there, and we're doing whatever we can in order to meet them and bring them downtown to enjoy the event. The event this year is on the 14th and 15th of June. It starts Friday afternoon, and as is the custom, we're going to have music, people serving some food, we have a band, we'll have the cars there, and hopefully we'll have some fun and a good get-together. Once again, I'd like to thank Josh Ingram from the Downtown Association, who's been most helpful, and at the same time, the staff of the city who is working with us, and in particular, Virginia McLeod, who has become our events planner, so to speak, and she's been very helpful in that respect. So, to the city of Sioux-St. Marie and to you all, welcome. Enjoy the cruise on the 14th and 15th, and once again, thank you very much for supporting us, and I hope the community does as well. I'll turn you over to Gary, my partner.
Thank you very much, Joe. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We're excited. This is our fourth year. When Joe and I had the idea to bring this out, we had no idea the success that we were going to achieve, and we're excited to have this growing. We have registrations coming from the United States, we have registrations coming from Thunder Bay, Sudbury, and all points in between, so even southern Ontario, some cars are coming up. So, this is a very exciting time, and we're really putting Sioux-St. Marie on the map as a car show destination, and that's our objective, is to get tourists coming to Sioux-St. Marie. So, look forward to expanding this a little wee bit. This year, I'm sorry, last year, we had some open houses at dealerships on Great Northern Road, and we had some troubles getting the cars from there downtown because the cars were heating up, and it was a very slow process. So, the events are still happening at the dealerships on the Friday afternoons, there's some open houses, but they will, those cars will be making their way down to Queen Street for the cruise when it starts on time around 6 o'clock. The exciting part about this year is we have CTV News, northern Ontario, broadcasting live from the GFL Memorial Gardens from between 5:00 and 7:00. They're doing their whole broadcast live from Sioux-St. Marie. So, we really want the citizens of Sioux-St. Marie to turn out and welcome them. We will have cars. We will ask the citizens of Sioux-St. Marie to gather on Queen Street and to show their support for the cruise and to show them that Sioux-St. Marie is alive and well. And from there, we start cruising. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Yeah, Counselor Hollingsworth.
Just more of a comment.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just want to say, great, four years, and congratulations, all of you. You say thank you to the city, but we need to thank you. You, your volunteers, the number of hours, the creativity, the passion, making this happen for our community. This is another example of a positive, and if it wasn't your hard work and your hours, I don't know where we'd be. So, thank you for your dedication to everyone. What's that?
And the fundraising.
And the fundraising.
Yes, all the registration money that we gather goes to Arch. I think we're well over $15,000 now that we've donated to Arch over the last three years, so...
That's incredible. $15,000 to Arch.
Yeah.
Well done.
Hundred percent, yeah. Thank you very much again. I'm going to turn it over to Josh, and he can cover some of the downtown merchants. We've got some new openings coming.
Yeah, absolutely. I won't keep you long, but Counsel, Mayor, thank you for having us today. I just want to say, when I got on board with the Downtown Association in 2016, we ran three events in the downtown core. 2019's calendar is 33 events, big, spanning from May to November. So, we're proud to be kind of expanding both the amount and kind of our breadth on either side of the calendar date. The Queen Street Cruise obviously was in its second year when I got my role, but I was there at the first one, and being one of the younger folks who partakes in the cruise, I wasn't around when some of the folks talked about what Queen Street was, but I'm a big fan of American Graffiti and Harrison Ford, and I got to tell you, it looks very similar. Very proud to have Sioux-St. Marie getting some, you know, provincial and UPE recognition for some of our events, and we're noticing that more and more. The association has a big surprise in November as well in regards to that, so it's great to see these things growing and to see Sioux-St. Marie growing, and the association is proud to be a part of that movement and that new identity and that kind of new life that the council is working so hard on. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. You don't look as well-rested as usual, but it looks like you're putting up a good fight, sir. So, thank you, folks, very much. Thank you to Virginia, and we hope to see you down June 14th and 15th at the GFL Memorial Gardens.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, Sandra Grief, Chair, Seniors' Rights Protection Council of Sioux-St. Marie and Area, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Sandra.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Provenzano, council staff and visitors. On behalf of the Senior Rights Protection Council, we come before you asking that you proclaim June 15th as Elder Abuse Awareness Day. In 2012, the United Nations General Assembly designated June 15th as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, as an official United Nations International Day, set aside to acknowledge the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. Elder abuse is defined by the World Health Organization as a single or repeated act or lack of appropriate action occurring within any relationship where there is an expectation of trust which causes harm or distress to an older person. It is a violation of human rights and includes physical, sexual, psychological, emotional, financial, and material abuse, as well as abandonment and neglect. It is estimated that 10% of older adults will experience one or more forms of abuse at some point during their senior years. This represents up to 370,000 older adults in Canada, and of that total, 160,000 live here in Ontario. It is the one day in the year when the whole world voices its opposition to the abuse and suffering inflicted on some of our older generations. It also provides organizations an opportunity to promote resources and services available throughout their communities, and that may help increase senior safety and well-being. Through our outreach, we encourage communities to promote senior rights and ensure that seniors are treated with dignity and respect in order that they can age in place and continue to serve their communities as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of society. The Senior Rights Protection Council of Sioux-St. Marie and Area recognizes the importance of taking action to create social change and help educate older adults to be aware of different forms of abuse and neglect that may occur in their lives or within their environment, and be familiar with how and where to report abuse. On Saturday, June 15th, and throughout 2019, our council will be joining communities across Ontario and around the world to raise awareness of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. On behalf of the Senior Rights Protection Council, thank you for allowing us time on your agenda to make our presentation, and thank you for proclaiming June 15th, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day.
Thank you. I'll make that proclamation now. Whereas older Ontarians deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this province and communities that they live in. Whereas World Elder Abuse Awareness Day is recognized annually throughout the country and around the world to raise the visibility of elder abuse by sharing information about abuse and neglect and promoting resources and services that increase senior safety and well-being. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day is an official United Nations International Day acknowledging the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. Elder abuse takes many different forms, emotional, physical, financial, neglect, abandonment, and sexual. It is estimated that 10% of older adults will experience one or more forms of abuse at some point during their senior years. This represents up to 370,000 older adults in Canada, and 160,000 of these older adults live in Ontario. Whereas the Senior Rights Protection Council of Sioux-St. Marie and Area recognizes the importance of taking action to create social change to prevent, educate, raise awareness of abuse and neglect of older adults. Whereas on Friday, June 15th, the Senior Rights Protection Council of Sioux-St. Marie will join communities across Ontario and around the world to raise awareness of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Everyone in our community is encouraged to promote senior rights and ensure seniors are being treated with respect and dignity. Now, therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux-St. Marie, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2019, as World Elder Abuse Day in Sioux-St. Marie, and encourage all of our residents to recognize and celebrate seniors and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of Ontario. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have one other proclamation on the agenda. We're going to jump to it first before dealing with the more substantive presentations. That's under Agenda Item 5.5, June is Recreation and Parks Month. Virginia McLeod, Manager of Recreation and Culture, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. McLeod.
Good evening, Mayor Provenzano and members of council. I'm just going to get the presentation up. So, June is Parks and Recreation Month, so we're excited to be sharing a bunch of different activities and things that people in our community can be doing. So, what is the power of play? Play isn't just games, and it's not just for children. Play is crucial for social, physical, intellectual, emotional, and civic development of youth, as well as for adults in our community. Play is a game of frisbee. It's biking. It could be making pottery, or it could be just going out for a stroll in our waterfront. So, where can you play in Sioux-St. Marie? There's so many different opportunities available to members of our community for play. We have 74 park locations, in addition, four sports complexes, community centers, outdoor pools, and an amazing trail system with the Hub Trail, networks at Hiawatha, and other places that you can just enjoy a walk in our neighborhoods. You could be playing volleyball, going out for yoga, or just sitting and reading on our boardwalk. There's also a number of events that are going to be happening in the community over the month of June, so we're just highlighting June right now. Our Futures SSM, in addition with Algoma Public Health Unit, has just kicked off participating Our Futures SSM, in addition with Algoma Public Health Unit, has just kicked off participation. So, we're encouraging everybody to get out, get active, and log your participation. There is an app that can be downloaded. In addition, people can sign up at participation.com and start logging your hours. We do have an opportunity for the community that has the most hours logged to be in the running for a prize of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, check out the information and go to participation.com and start logging your hours for Sault Ste. Marie. We're also excited to be having the grand opening of our splash pad on Saturday, June eighth, at one P.M. So, we're inviting members of the community to come out, enjoy some fun and activities, and hopefully run through the splash pad in warm weather. Also this year, which is going to be new, is we're going to be launching bocce in the park. That's going to be happening on Monday evenings in Clerg Park. It's free for all the community members. We'll be bringing out the equipment, so we encourage everybody to come out and try to game a bocce and meet some new friends. I'd also like to share an event that's happening with the Sioux Cycling Club. They're hosting their annual Trails Fest, which takes place June seventh, eighth, and ninth. June seventh is an urban trail adventure. June eighth is an all-day trip out to Batuwana. And June ninth is a family fun-filled day at Kinsman Park with numerous vendors, activities, trail rides, and different things that are going on. So, visit the siucyclingclub.ca website for more information. Also in June, we have National Go Skate Day, so events are taking place on June twenty-first at the skate park. We also offer a great Junior Gardener Club at the Ontario Clerg National Historic Site. And following that, July first, we kick off our annual Hub Trail Festival. So, we're encouraging everybody to get out, get active, explore all the opportunities that the Sioux has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proclamation here for you, which I know is really long, so maybe next year we can make it shorter.
Will do.
Okay. At Sault Ste. Marie, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreation and park systems providing countless recreational opportunities for residents and visitors from around the world. Whereas recreation enhances quality of life, balanced living, lifelong learning, helps people live happier and longer, develops skills and positive self-image in children and youth, develops creativity and builds healthy bodies and positive lifestyles. Whereas recreational participation builds family unity and social capital, strengthens volunteering community development, enhances social interaction, creates community pride and vitality, and promotes sensitivity and understanding to cultural diversity. Whereas parks, open space, and trails provide active and passive outdoor recreational opportunities, help maintain clear air and water, and promote stewardship of the natural environment. And whereas the benefits provided by recreational programs, facilities, services, parks, and open space reduce healthcare and social service costs, serve to boost the economy, economic renewal and sustainability, hands property values, attract new business, increase tourism, and curb employee absenteeism. And whereas all levels of government, the voluntary sector, and private enterprise throughout the province participate in the planning, development, and operation of recreation and parks programs, services, and facilities. Whereas Ontario has designated June as Recreation and Parks Month and annually recognizes the benefits and celebrates the benefits derived year-round from the quality of public and private recreation and parks resources at the local, regional, and provincial levels. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, as Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. Marie, recognition of the benefits and values of recreations and parks, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Recreation and Parks Month here in Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Agenda Item 5.3. Asset Management Policy. Peterson Cisco, Manager, Watson &amp; Associates Economist, is in attendance. We'll give Council a short presentation on the asset management policy. The policy is found under Agenda Item 6.5. On the agenda, reported the Director of Engineering is attached for the consideration of Council, and a motion by Councilors Hollingsworth and Scott resolved that the report of the Director of Engineering dated two thousand nineteen oh six oh three concerning strategic asset management policy be received and that the policy be approved. And I believe the C.A.O. had a few other comments you wish to share with Council.
That's right. Yeah, thank you to Mr. Mayor, to Council. As you know, a corporate asset management policy is required now under Ontario regulations, and we need to have it in place come July first. Notwithstanding that, staff here at Sault Ste. Marie are very strong behind having a proper fiscal and operational framework for strategic management of its assets, and is behind having a policy in place to help guide and frame how asset management plans are going to take place and be forged. So, this report that's before you tonight is our collective efforts that we've been working on previous to the regulation being requested, but also to make sure that we're complying to the regulation. There's a team that was done, that was constructed within City Administration, a committee to look at and forge through this. We've had the assistance of Watson on creating the policy that's before you tonight. I'm going to now turn it to Don Elliott to explain just quickly what some of the processes were that were undertaken, and then to introduce the speaker, who will then take you through the asset management policy. Don.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as Council knows, asset management has to do with balancing lifecycle costs and levels of service. We're actually doing another, a level of service exercise coincidentally at the same time. So, Peterson Cisco is with us here tonight to do a presentation, and I'd like to turn the mic over to him for this policy.
Welcome to Council, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, as mentioned, over the past number of months, Watson and Associates have been working closely with city staff on the preparation of a strategic asset management policy for the city. And I am pleased to be here this evening to provide Council with a bit of context surrounding the policy as well, with an overview of the proposed policy document itself. So, first, a few general notes regarding asset management. So, while municipalities have managed assets for as long as they have owned and operated assets, asset management as a practice is a fully integrated business approach that involves finance, it involves engineering, it involves operations and maintenance, and this integrated approach recognizes that the main role of assets is to enable the city to provide a range of services to the public. And so, sustainable, financially responsible asset management balances service levels and costs while managing risks pertaining to these assets. So, a few words around the legislative context which drove the timing of the policy development. The province introduced Ontario Regulation 58817 in late two thousand eighteen under the Infrastructure for Jobs and Prosperity Act. The regulation requires municipalities to prepare asset management plans in accordance with the requirements set out by that regulation. The regulation gives municipalities a number of years to comply with the requirements in the regulation, with various milestones along the way. But the first step along that journey to compliance, the preparation of the asset management policy, must be completed by July first of this year. So, what is the asset management policy? I think there are three main roles for this document for the city. It is a document that articulates the city's commitment to asset management. It also identifies goals and objectives with respect to asset management in the city. It is very importantly a statement by the city of the principles by which the city will manage its assets, consistent with the organizational strategic plan. And it is also a document that outlines how the asset management process will be required to align with various other strategic initiatives. So, it is not meant to be a prescriptive guide on how to do day-to-day activities with respect to asset management, but it is meant to be that framework to enable the city to make consistent and sound decisions with respect to the assets, as well as to plan for future needs appropriately and to build ultimately public confidence with respect to infrastructure. There was a process that we followed in the development of the policy. We started in January of this year. There's just one item I want to highlight here, which was the staff workshop that we undertook with staff in early April. We had good representation from senior staff of the city, as well as representation from the Public Utilities Commission at the workshop. At the workshop, we discussed as a group the importance of asset management, as well as various considerations that are important to ensure that asset management planning is working properly for the city. So, those discussions in the workshop really formed the basis of formulating this policy statement that's in front of you today. We did have a number of rounds of review of that policy document as well, to ultimately land at the document that's in front of you tonight. So, you will find eight sections in the policy document. I will not go through each section in detail, but there are a few areas that I would like to just point out or focus specifically on. In subsequent slides, I will focus a little bit on the asset management goals and objectives and principles sections, which are, I think, the core of the asset management policy. But a few words around the other areas as well. There's a background section to provide an overall context, including the regulatory requirement for this policy to be in place, the section on terms and definitions, to ensure we are all speaking the same language when it comes to asset management. Section three, this is a section on scope that describes the scope of assets that will be considered in the city's asset management planning. And what's identified in there is that generally any asset that is owned by the city will be included in asset management planning. But there's also recognition of the fact that with respect to drinking water infrastructure, to the extent that that's administered by the P.U.C., there will need to be coordination of asset management planning between those entities. The section on goals and objectives and principles, I will come back to. In terms of the strategic alignment and integration, which is section six of the policy, so as mentioned earlier, the policy seeks to ensure that asset management planning is aligned with the broader strategic objectives and municipal documents. And so, to that end, we have provided some examples of municipal documents that asset management planning will need to be aligned with, primarily the corporate strategic plan, but as well as the city's official plan, and irrelevant master plans, and all other strategy and policy documents that have asset management implications. The policy also recognizes that alignment between asset management and the annual budget process is paramount, and so to that end, the policy spells out how the asset management planning will be integrated with the annual budget process. The next section deals with roles and responsibilities, including the C.A.O. as the executive lead for asset management planning in the city. There is also a role for the Asset Management Working Group comprising representatives from all city departments, as well as representation from the P.U.C. And this section also provides an explanation of Council's involvement with respect to the city's asset management planning process. And then the final section on the review period, there's a mandated five-year review cycle for the policy as required by the regulations, so that will be followed, as well as if any changes to that regulatory environment take place. So, on the note of asset management goals and objectives, we have recognized that the primary objective of asset management planning is to enable the city to consistently achieve defined service targets. When undertaking asset management planning, there are a number of specific goals that have been identified that staff will keep in mind in preparing those asset management plans. These goals have previously been identified in the city's asset management plans and are provided in the policy to also guide future asset management planning into the future. So, as mentioned in the introduction, the asset management policy primarily is a statement of principles by which the city will manage its assets. And these have been grouped into six themes, which you will see listed on the slide that's up now, and we will step through each of these theme areas now to draw out the essence of the principles that have been identified in each respective section. So, on the theme of service delivery, again, I think it's recognized that service delivery is the key purpose of municipal assets. The city doesn't maintain assets just for the sake of having them, but for the sake of service provision. And so, principles in this section of the policy primarily speak to the need to develop a decision framework for prioritizing asset management activities, and that prioritization framework will need to include considerations such as risk assessments, ensuring that the community benefits are being promoted by alignment with the strategic plan, as well as that any prioritization with respect to asset management activities reflects the community's needs, and also that infrastructure planning promotes accessibility for persons with disabilities. On the theme of long-term sustainability and resiliency, and as required by provincial regulation, there is a heavy focus on environmental considerations specifically, so in the form of making sure that the city will consider potential vulnerabilities that may be caused by climate change, and developing asset management strategies that outline the actions and any associated costs required to meet those vulnerabilities. And so, at a minimum, what that would require is for the city to continue reviewing asset design standards, for example, asset life cycles, maintenance requirements, and levels of service, to make sure that if there are responses required as a result of climate change, those are addressed appropriately. On the next theme, which is asset management as a holistic approach, we have taken a look at this holistic approach from two perspectives, and that is both from the perspective of physically managing these assets, and that is recognizing that it is not just about the capital cost of these assets and the replacement of these assets when they fail or come to the end of life, but it is understanding the full lifecycle associated with these assets. So, starting with planning for the emplacement of new assets and new infrastructure, all the way through the way that it's constructed, the continuous monitoring of the performance of those assets, and planning for the operational maintenance elements as well, to make sure that the full asset lifecycle is understood and planned for appropriately. But also looking at this holistic approach from the perspective of involving all disciplines and departments of the city in this exercise, recognizing that there needs to be deliberate collaboration between the various disciplines and areas of the organizations, as opposed to optimizing individual asset areas in isolation. With respect to fiscal responsibility, certainly all municipalities face fiscal constraints and challenges, and so there are a number of principles identified in the policy document that speak to the importance of having an evidence-based, data-driven approach to decision-making to ensure that the city and constituents see the maximum value from the assets and services. And then to improve affordability, striving to reduce the overall lifecycle costs of these assets by, again, looking at all aspects of the asset lifecycle and seeing if there are various maintenance or operational activities that can extend the capital requirements of these assets. The city is also committing to ensuring that the asset management financing strategy is based on a long-term view, to ensure that the assets are funded appropriately and to avoid or help to mitigate any unexpected drastic increases in tax fees or user fees in the future, and providing funding levels that are sustainable over the long run really helps to avoid having to play catch-up in later years. The city is also committing to considering items such as affordability, debt levels, and the availability of external funding, and determining an appropriate level of funding for asset management planning, and also making sure that adequate funding is provided, not just, again, for the capital needs, but also for operations and maintenance to prolong the useful lives of the respective assets. The next theme is innovation and continual improvement. There's recognition that continual improvement increases the asset management maturity, and over the longer term will allow services to be delivered more efficiently and more effectively. But first, to allow for improvement, it is necessary to review progress. And so, to that end, what we have included in the policy document is a commitment to review asset management progress annually. The results of those reviews will be brought forward in front of Council, and they will address the city's progress in implementing its asset management system, any factors impeding progress being made, as well as strategies to address those impeding factors. That annual review will be coordinated by the C.A.O. as being the executive lead for asset management, but in close consultation with the Asset Management Working Group. What is also going to be important as asset management evolves is to continue to monitor industry best practices and innovation opportunities, and periodically updating those asset management strategies as may be appropriate. But also, in terms of capacity building internally, it will be important to support staff professional development initiatives in that area. And then finally, on the theme of public engagement, so recognizing the importance of public engagement, it was felt that it will be important for the city to provide opportunities for residents and other interested parties to provide input into the asset management process, but also ensuring that any of the inputs that go into asset management planning or decision-making more generally are well documented and effectively communicated through public engagement to ensure transparency in that regard. So, that provides hopefully a high-level overview of what's contained in the policy document that's in front of you. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments from Council, and ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the strategic asset management policy.
Okay, Counsel, do we have any questions? Counsel Schumaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Section Six, which is Strategic Alignment and Integration, it says that when preparing budget submissions, this is on page five of six of the policy. "When preparing budget submissions, service area personnel will refer to the asset management plan to help them identify potential revenues, evaluate the validity of each significant new capital asset, and incorporate new revenue tools." Incorporating new revenue tools, can you give me an example of that?
So, new revenue tools, for example, a stormwater fee or a stormwater charge is an example of a revenue source that maybe isn't utilized by municipalities currently, but to support the provision of stormwater infrastructure, that is an appropriate alternative funding mechanism that could be available to fund that infrastructure.
If, for example, we didn't charge for parking in certain parking lots, and we started doing that, would that be an example of implementing new revenue? doing that, would that be an example of implementing a new revenue tool?
It could be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, councilors? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, you read the motion on that?
I did read the motion.
All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, 5.4 Historic Sites Board Annual Report, Kathy Fisher, curator, Erma Tinger Clerg National Historic Site, is in attendance.
Welcome to camp, council, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I just want to say we have the best asset in town. And ours has lasted 200 years. Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor Provenzano, and member of council. I am here to represent the Historic Sites Board with their annual report 2018 for the operations of the Erma Tinger Clerg National Historic Site. I'm going to ask the members behind me to stand. There are seven members total, including our appointed council member, councillor Shoemaker. So I'm here on behalf of these individuals who guide us through the operations on a monthly basis and a yearly basis for the operations of the Erma Tinger site. According to their bylaws, this Historic Sites Board must submit to you an annual report required for the responsibility of the operation. So for 2018, it's an outstanding year, but I'd like to begin with a quote from Honorable Elizabeth Doudswell, our Lieutenant Governor of Ontario. A museum is a cultural hub. These vital cultural institutions are taking care to reflect the changing diversity in our communities. There is an increasing understanding that museums are not merely static preservers of artifacts, but rather dynamic places where people of all backgrounds come together in dialogue, learn about issues that matter, or to remind us that humanity has provided us with many stories to share. So here we are with a dynamic story to share. 2018 was a year to be proud. The Historic Sites Board saw that Erma Tinger site realized its highest visitation to date. This visitation, of course, is done with promotion from our tourism partners, cruise ship partners, Downtown Association, and marketing efforts. And every year, we are seeing greater attendance from bus tours, cruise ships, and our special events. We are now open year-round and doing more than ever. Come out later this week, we have three events per day plus regular visitation, all happening at once. 2018 visitation, 21,107. Ten years ago, the site operated seasonally, April to November, and we were happy to see 7,000 to 10,000 people in that time period. So to see these kinds of numbers is outstanding. Forty percent of the visitors come to visit on a general visitation basis. Twenty-eight percent visit because of our special events. Sixteen percent come in group bookings, and sixteen percent for educational programming. We are partners with pretty well every organization in town in order so that we can produce these programs and bring in people to the site. Accomplishments cannot be done without great partners. The examples tonight in these photographs are Horticultural Society, Clean North, the library, City Gardeners from our Public Works Department, our indigenous communities with IFC, Algoma U, Garden River, and Maiti in Batshuana, White Pines and Core Collegiate History classes and Cultural High Skills, major students in grade 10 civics classes, the Downtown Association, Local Immigration Partnership, Sault Ste. Republic Library, Living History Algoma, Theater in Motion, and Ontario Museum Association, all in conjunction with Fore Culture and Parks Canada. We are now a full-time year-round site, as I have stated. So we do now see venue rentals of all kinds, from weddings, photos, private parties, graduations, workshops, webinars, conferences, culinary events, and companies that just want to do private presentations in our theater. We also have finished our second year operating the gift shop, realizing a net profit of $10 million. And if you haven't been to the shop lately, come see our unique items. 2018 offered opportunities this year for us to do some more strategies, and the newest one is with Algoma Kinewabi, or Algoma Country, and the Ontario Culinary Tourism Alliance. We participated in developing the first food tourism culinary strategy. As we head forward, the Heritage Discovery Center has now reached five years old. I would like to thank many of the volunteers that commit to our place, and last year, we'd had them all come and give them a token of our appreciation. As you can see, May is Museum Month, so we try and do that every May, and this year, we pointed out that in the middle of the M on that logo is a V for volunteers. Our volunteers received thanks this year for five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service. The volunteers alone total over 2,000 hours dedicated to our site, something the staff and the board cannot do without. This evening, on behalf of the Historic Sites Board, we ask that you consider other agenda items that we have, which is firearms exemption for black powder, and also the application to the Community Museums operating grant, an annual application for provincial funding. And also, on behalf of the Historic Sites Board, we thank you for another great year.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any, well, do we have questions, council of the, of the board? No? Go ahead, councilor.
Can I add a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, Kathy, to you, your team, the volunteers, thank you for what you do to our, for our community. You have a number more cruise ships coming, and I know that they're looking forward to participating in your wonderful events. So again, you create a lot of pride, a lot of positive stories, not just with adults, but with our children. So keep up the good work to all of you. Thank you for what you do, and also for Virginia, because I know that she supports you a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you absolutely, you do exceptional work, Kathy, and we see it with all the visitors at the center, so we really appreciate the effort that you and your staff make.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there wasn't a motion accompanying this, but I think we should receive it as information, so a motion by councilors Christian and Gardie resolved that the 2018 annual report of the Historic Sites Board be received as information.
All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that finishes off the proclamations, delegations portion of the meeting. Mr. Mayor, I know you have other pressing matters to get to later in the evening. I would, we do have one item on the regular agenda, I would suggest we deal with that prior to consent, and that is item 7.4.1 Bay Street Improvements. A report of the manager of design and transportation engineering is attached for the consideration of council. The relevant bylaws 2019-132 and 2019-133 are listed under item 11 of the agenda and will be read with the bylaws under that item. There is in addition a motion as well, motion by councilors Hollingsworth and Gardie, resolve that the report of the manager of design and transportation engineering concerning Bay Street improvements be received, and that contract 2019-6E be awarded to Pioneer Construction, Inc., and further that the reduced scope of the work described in this report be removed from the contract in order to reduce cost. Further that engineering fee limit for Crescent Engineering previously approved be increased from $470,650 to $580,000. Further that PUC be sole sourced for the associated electrical relocations and street lighting upgrades, and that $1.9 million of the special 2019 gas tax funds originally allocated to the Downtown Initiative and $600,000 originally allocated to resurfacing projects be redirected to the Bay Street project.
Okay, so councillor Christian, you, you put up a, it's not really an amending motion, I think it's a completely different motion.
No, it's not.
So before we get to this, I can pass it to the clerk for, for his input and direction.
Sure.
Did you have any questions? You had your hand up.
Yes, I have questions.
Were you going to ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is this, are you putting this motion forward independent of the answers you get to those questions?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I am.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor Christian.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll direct these to Mr. Mill. First of all, I just thank you for the report. I know these types of reports are difficult to write, given the magnitude of the changes. Just a couple of questions, though. When was the project at council originally? What was the date of the meeting that we, we had this, the discussion and final approval of the Bay Street reconstruction?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian, we were at council on March 18th to increase the original engineering assignment that Crescent had back in 2014 to reflect the new, the preferred alternative from the environmental assessment.
Now, we, in fairness, we had a brief conversation this afternoon, but I'll ask the question anyway. Was the late, relatively late approval of the project, has that impacted the tendering process? Seems to me that that was rather late in the, the planning process in terms of issuing an RFP for projects of this magnitude, given that we're about to, we're on the cusp of starting this thing.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian, I would say that the, the lateness of finishing the EA definitely compressed the design period, so presented some challenges to, with respect to getting estimates in a timely fashion, trying to make some quick decisions on the fly with respect to, you know, the scope of work that we were moving forward with on the landscaping and traffic engineering and that. I don't know that it affected the tendering process through, of the, for the contractors.
Yeah, no.
Certainly, they had three, four weeks or so to bid the job, which is, which is typical.
Yeah. No, in our conversation today, you said that there was potentially another contractor that could have bid on the project.
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian, I, I said that we had one bid, as, as you, you had asked, and that generally, typically for resurfacing-type projects or surfacework projects that don't include pipe work, we were usually getting a bid from two contractors. This particular project, we got one.
Yeah, and, and that's why I'm kind of asking about the timing, I'm just, and I guess there's no way to answer it, but potentially, there's a couple of contractors out there. I'm just concerned that with one bid, there's no competitive bidding here. In your report, it says, subsequent to the original budget estimate of 4.9, council, acting on council's wishes that a signature project be re-sculpted. With all due respect, I don't quite remember it that way. I remember the project coming before council, asking for a complete reconfiguration of Bay Street, and these were the enhancements, and I was handed a conceptual drawing of what it looked, was going to look like. So maybe it's semantics, but I understood the way it was presented, that the 4.9 million was the enhancements and everything we were getting. I don't recall anywhere, and maybe I'm wrong, and I apologize if I am, that the $5 million meant that, well, we're going to have to rebudget this. I, I didn't get that sense. I, I got the sense that that was the budget for it. And the other thing here, it says, unfortunately, there was no opportunity to share the pre-tender estimate without compromising the competitive bid process. Who are you referring to sharing the pre-tender estimates with? Us? Council?
That's correct.
And at this point, if we accept, if we accept the, the new plan, we don't even know which streets we're looking at postponing at this point. It says that we're going to defer some resurfacing, but we haven't identified the streets that we're going to postpone.
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian, we, we have, we've taken two sections of the miscellaneous paving contract and made them provisional items. We put an addendum to the contract out last week, it closes on Wednesday, made them provisional so that if we did need that money, we could pull it out without any consequence to us as far as like changing scope in that contract. So we have, we have identified a couple of projects that may fit in well with the, with the money that we need.
I think the CAO wants to add something here.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, as well, just to be clear, too, the, we're talking here about the gas tax, so it's the top-up gas tax, and we're saying reallocate from what we had provided to council previously. So there was an additional $1.8 million in resurfacing work that was identified through the gas tax, that we're saying now should only be $1.2 million.
I guess what I'm getting at is, and I apologize, I just want to be clear on this.
Yeah, well, so I think there's, there's, both, the two staffs said two different things there, but I think they relate. One of, one of the first point is that it's additional work that we're doing because of the gas tax.
Understood.
And they are reserving the right to pull some of that work back if that money's needed. We won't know that until we get a little farther down the road.
Fair enough.
So it's not like less resurfacing is being done.
Except.
Is that accurate?
Well, we, Mr. Mayor, we, we didn't want to just hack off two, two, two of the roads in the miscellaneous paving contract, because that could come in lower, and, and when we actually, when we actually get the competitive pricing back, it may make better sense to, to take from here as opposed to here.
Yeah. You haven't decided where you're going to take it from yet.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but under the current situation, every possible road that can be resurfaced should be resurfaced. I just, I'm struggling with, it, this is a great project, don't get me wrong, I love this project, but it just, I'll reserve my comments, I guess, for later, and pass it on for others for common questions.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, just a few questions with regards to businesses. When this project goes ahead, I believe, again, it's going to be during peak tourist time. So Ralph, you're hoping to start when? June? And how long would the project be for?
Mr. Mayor, councillor Hollingsworth, yeah, the project with your approval would essentially kick off tomorrow, well, pre-construction meeting this week, and it, construction, probably, physical construction won't start for a couple of weeks, materials being ordered and, and that, but yeah, it'll, it'll carry on through the fall.
Okay. And I appreciate that this is when you do construction during these busy months. So my other question is, there's a lot of businesses along that whole route, from hotels to restaurants and so forth, that are going to be potentially impacted. How are you going to accommodate, especially the hotels, the tourists trying to get to the hotels, they're not familiar with the area, as one example?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth, the road isn't planned to be closed for the majority of construction. The bylaw that's attached to this report is for intermittent, short-duration closures of like a block at a time, as required. I anticipate it would be like one to three days tops, and we would work with individual businesses affected on those blocks at that time with signage directing them around. There's a lot of cross streets, so there's a lot of north-south access to, most of those businesses that are there are, take up most of the block, so it's a good opportunity to get traffic in from other areas.
Okay, just a couple of other questions. Like you have done up on the Canadian and up on the Great Northern Road, I know you've had some really good signage. Couple other questions, the cruise ships will be coming soon, which means a lot more buses will be transporting people to the Bush Play Museum and to our other historical significant areas. Have you been in contact with the bus companies to help them with the challenges they may have?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth, we have not yet.
Okay. And just my final question with regards to, again, I agree with my co-wardmate, it's a great project, but will you be putting up some signage to show what the end product's going to look like? So again, people that live here, our tourists, can see how we're going to be doing some changes. Are you going to be doing up some pictures, billboards? Are you going to be doing up some pictures, billboards?
There is no plan to do any kind of billboards on site or anything like that at this time.
Okay. Just a thought.
Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just picking up on Counselor Christian's questions about the resurfacing. So there's, I just went back, there's been two resurfacing reports, that on April 15th, 2019, there was Grosvenor, Allen Side Road, Ransom Drive Ellis Road, Nixon Road, that were slated for resurfacing this year, and that was, I think, part of the regular resurfacing budget. And then, last council meeting, May 6th, there was Queen from Lorna to Kerr, Pim from Summit to McDonald, Chapel from Willow to Allard, or Northern from North to Pine, that were candidates for resurfacing under the additional gas tax money. So would it be one of Queen, Pim, Chapel, or Northern, or some combination of those that would be deferred this year?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, I'm just trying to recall, yeah, it'd be an entire section, like an entire street, not a portion of this one and a portion of this one, is that the answer to your question?
So either Queen, or Pim, or Chapel, or Northern, provided the bids come in, what you expect them to come in?
I believe we identified Grosvenor and Chapel as sort of, as far as estimates go, fitting in well with whatever the amount was. I can't even recall my own report right now.
Right, right, okay. Okay. Now, with respect to closures of the street from various sections for one to three days, I know this came up last year with respect to events when Bruce Street, no, yeah, Bruce Street was closed, and there was pretty significant traffic backups for the Sioux. So are road closures going to be coordinated with events so that, or can they be coordinated with events so that we don't run into the same log jams that we had last year?
Yeah, we're trying to. We have, aware of a couple of events, one at the Ermiter, the...
Ermitaker Clerk.
Correct. That, I think that's on the July long weekend, so we'll have the contractor pull back, clean up, open things up, so there's at least one lane, hopefully two lanes of traffic getting through there at that time, and we'll handle them all on an individual basis like that.
Okay, yeah. Rotary Fest is another that comes to mind in mid-July. Yeah, I would strongly urge staff to make sure that they're talking with all of our community partners to ensure that closures are the least disruptive they can be.
Do our best.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Vezzo Allen.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Rumel. I know when you came to the Accessibility Committee meeting, there was some concerns with the walkways in terms of having the, sort of, the variation in materials as far as it being, you know, comfortable and realistic for people using wheelchairs and things like that. So has that been addressed with this new reworking of the project right now?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vezzo Allen, that was addressed prior to the closing of the tender. We had, by addendum, pulled out the paving stone crosswalks and the paving stone landings at the intersections, so that the linear pedestrian facilities are either concrete or asphalt.
Okay. Thank you. And my next question is for Mr. Ver. Mr. Ver, with the 1.9 that's getting, potentially getting allocated from the 2.5 for the downtown initiative, so that $600,000 will stay within being emarked for the downtown initiative?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, to Counselor Vezzo Allen, that's correct, and we are hoping to come back to council with some initial work that would be done this year in preparations for a plan that will be done next year, implementation.
And my only other question was already asked by Counselor Hollingsworth in concerns with road closures and events, so I guess the only recommendation would just be to staff to, I know that the Downtown Association has 33 events planned, so definitely, I think, tapping into Josh Ingram and what's going on at the Bush Plain and the Art Gallery and Rotary and the Ermitaker Clerk, Old Stone House, I think is really key, so that you can create that calendar, and then I think that would be really helpful and also just good, good communication with our community partners. Thank you.
Counselor, do you have any other questions on this, on this report? Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, Mr. Rumel. I know we're talking about projects being over budget here, but historically, the end of the year, when we finished our Capitol Works projects, we have been substantially under budget when we've had money at the end of the season. Are we in a position historically to say that we could possibly make up the $600,000 by being under budget on the projects this year and not have to use or lose the additional $600,000 for additional resurfacing?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, on the entire 2019 Capitol Road program, we could make up $600,000. At the end of the day, we may be underspent on the contingency allowances and the four or five road jobs that we have going.
So you would think contingencies would add up to that, and this is just kind of playing it safe that if we were not to do that, that we would use the $600,000? I'm not going to hold you, I know you can't tell.
Yeah, they can't, Counselor Nero, Mr. Rumel can't really.
Historically, you've been in those positions.
I agree. Historically, there has been in that budget, yeah. He can say that, but he...
In the past, we've had some very big savings on some years, yes.
But he's not going to sit there and say, "We're going to save that," because if we don't, he's going to be in the...
Last year, we did not.
Yeah, so Counselor Shoemaker, on that same point?
On that same point, if we, so, I mean, even if the savings were there, if a project is deferred soon because, because we're trying to allocate the funds to Bay Street, we couldn't then do that project later in the season, correct? Am I correct about that?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, yes, that's correct. That would be done for the year.
Yeah, the projects we're going to do, we've, they're all for tender, right? We're not going to be adding any additional projects.
Well, so if we saw savings of $600,000, for example, it'd be, we'd have to apply that next year.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, Counsel, any more questions? Or, I want to deal with Counselor Christian's suggested motion here, just so I deal with it transparently, because him and I had a conversation. I'll read it, then I'll explain to the council, explain to him. Resolve that council postpone the reconfiguration and reconstruction of Bay Street and that this project be deliberated during the 2020 budgeting process. Part of the motion is the same as voting the motion down, right? Because if you vote the motion down, we're not doing it, and it will go into the queue for next year. So that's not, it's not an amendment of this motion or a postponement of this motion. It's not even something that we have to pass, because if voting against it would have that effect. The second part is, and further, that council asks staff to take any remedial steps to improve the current condition of Bay Street until such time that future reconstruction begins. It's on that point that I think we need to suss out a bit and get information for council. So, Mr. Rumel, if council did direct you, and I mean, this isn't my position, and I'd like to see Bay Street go ahead, but if council didn't, if council's will was to say, "Do not do Bay Street this year," you have all those monies that are earmarked for Bay Street, what would it cost to put a new blacktop on Bay Street?
Mr. Mayor, we would put out a very quick tender. I don't know what the quantities are. It would just be a thin skim coat of asphalt, so to speak, to get us through to when we could do a proper reconstruction of it.
But that would be a very interim spend, so it wouldn't be, it would be money that we would see the benefit of this season, presumably if we did Bay next year, the year after. I just want to have a sense of what would we be, what kind of good money would be thrown after bad, right? Because to me, I don't want to put any money into Bay Street unless we're going to fix Bay Street.
Correct. It would be a Band-Aid solution. It would not last very long. Four lanes, you'd have to pave the whole four lanes wide. I don't know, Don?
Well, as I understand, Don, and you can correct me, all of our roadworks came back high this year.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The construction costs have increased this year.
So is there any reason to believe that if we had tendered just to do a coat of asphalt on Bay Street, that that would be any different?
That's correct. It wouldn't, it wouldn't change. And I, the diff, what you're talking about doing is putting a skim coat on Bay Street that's just like a Band-Aid for one year. It's not going to last.
What would that, gender, what would, what would that cost?
It'd be hundreds, it'd be, in my view, it'd probably be hundreds of thousands, but I'm not sure. It's hard to take, grab numbers out of the air, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So Counselor Christian, to your motion, if this fails, then you can move to direct council to do something on Bay Street, but otherwise, this motion's not going to precede the current motion in front of us. Counsel, I just, you know, I'll speak to this, and then, and then if anybody else can have their comments and we can vote. I actually went to the tender opening. Not by intention, I went because someone was in my office, and they said, "I'm going to the Bay Street tender opening," and I said, "Okay, well, I'll come with you." You know, and I was disappointed by how high the tender came back, and I made it clear to the gentlemen sitting to my left and my right, and to the city engineer, and to Mr. Rumel, that it was really disappointing. That's no fault of theirs, and the reality is, we don't have a very competitive market for this work. I don't believe the market will be any more competitive next summer. And my concern is, whenever we put a project off, it never gets cheaper. It always gets more expensive. If I thought we could save a million dollars by doing this next year, I'd be the first guy to say, "Let's do this next year." We talk a lot about rejuvenating our downtown, we're trying to activate the space, we're doing some really good things, but Bay Street is, it's a foundational piece, and everybody comes off that bridge and we send them through our downtown on a Gardner Expressway. Four lanes, time lights, get out of here as fast as you can. There's no scenery to it, and you just go straight down a big open alley. And I don't think until we fix Bay Street and bring that, that feeling to our downtown that we're trying to achieve, I don't think until we fix Bay Street, we can, we can work on the other pieces. So we're going to put this off. If we put it off, it has to be done sooner or later. It has to be done the next year, or the year after that, or the year after that. I appreciate the work staff's done to bring the project into scope and to find a number with the contractor and our professional engineer that's giving us advice where we can cover it. There's a sep, there's two separate issues here. One is, is the actual, getting the project done this year, and the other issue is our roadworks are coming back high. But it wasn't just Bay Street that came back high. They all came back high. And, and, and maybe we have to make it very clear on a going-forward basis that we won't, we won't issue them if they come back high, and we'll just keep our money in our pocket and we won't do the work. I support that proposition. I have told these gentlemen that from here on in, if we're getting high contract prices back, we shouldn't do the work. And sooner or later, hopefully, the contract prices will come down. But in this specific case, they brought it down, they've worked to find the money, and they worked with the contractor to bring it down, and I think this specific project should proceed. If it doesn't proceed, I think in the end, next year, we're going to be sitting here, and if anything, it will be a little more expensive. So that's why I support moving forward in the project, and I hope council finds its way to do that. In the event that you don't, we will just move forward in any event. Not with the project, but just with what we're doing. Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are well-thought-out points, and I, I understand where you're coming from specifically, and I too want to thank staff. I mean, and I don't blame staff for this at all, and I commend staff for trying to make the adjustments needed to push this thing through. And I'm all in favor, I agree with the mayor 100% in terms of where Bay Street fits into the whole project. Notwithstanding that, I get the sense that this project managed us and we didn't manage the project, and I think a lot of it had to do with concept designs and changes and the timing of things. I agree with the mayor, it's not a competitive environment, but there, there is at least one other contractor that's out there that could have potentially bid on this, and I do believe, not being an expert, I do believe that if we had a second competitor in this, we probably would have got a better price. I agree with the mayor that we need to say, we need to send a message that these prices are too high, and I think this is the perfect opportunity to delay this. I don't believe, based on what I've seen, being a counselor on this side, watching the tenders coming in for other projects, we're basically over budget on everything and significantly, so I'll be voting down this, this request. There's one tender, we're $2.5 million over budget, and for that, we're having to cut back on many of the recommendations and the concepts that were, that actually sold me, and we're looking at making deferrals and sacrifices. So I really think we need to take a sober second look and tackle this next year. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Hollingsworth, then Counselor Gardi, and then Counselor Hilsinger.
Thank you. Your points, Mayor, they're well respected, and yes, a lot of our contractors and a lot of our projects seemed, over the last year to two years, are more pricey, and this would be an opportunity to send that message, as my wardmay has said. But I'm also concerned that, I think around this table, a number of us are very concerned about our roads, and I am concerned that we might be taking from Paul and taking it from Rob and just shifting our dollars around when there's so many basic infrastructure needs that require attention, our basic roads. However, this is our welcome mat to our community, no matter how you slice or dice it, a majority of the people, first-time tourists coming to our community, do come down this street, Bay Street. I just want to emphasize a few points. One, we have to make sure that we remember that all our roads need attention, and that should be our priority, not just Bay Street. Two, we also have to keep in mind that there are businesses on Bay Street that will be impacted, even though you say that it's going to be closed for a day, two days, or three days. Three days is still a huge impact for businesses. Three, our tourists that are going to be finding their hotels or restaurants will be frustrated, so please, if we do go ahead with this project, we need to manage the logistics very, very well with clear communication, not just with our partners, but with our constituents, which I think we fail in the past. Four, please consider putting up some signage to make sure that people understand and educate on what it potentially will look like. Whenever a new skyscraper goes up in other communities, new building, even this community, there's always a rendering. I think that's a positive, by putting up a few large signs to show the positive side of this project. Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Gardi.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't recall the gentleman's name who was here to present to us that evening when we looked at the reconstruction of Bay Street, forgive me, but a couple of people asked a question specifically in regards to the downtown. I recall that I asked one of them in terms of how he thought this project would help Queen Street, and I kind of asked for him to kind of give some ideas as to what was incorporated in this design that would help Queen Street specifically, because at the time, I was thinking, you know, Queen Street is downtown. His response to me was, you know, the overall aesthetic and what we were planning to do down there was something that would kind of reinvent what was, reinvent Bay Street and make it someplace that people wanted to stay and have some wayfinding in there to direct people to Queen Street, et cetera. You know, the, I, I can't see how delaying this by a year is advantageous. Things are going to be more expensive next year. Despite whatever kind of history I or anyone else has around this table, I think most people will tell you, things get more expensive as time passes. Was it a competitive process? It was intended to be. It was, but, you know, only one company decided to respond. Maybe there was a second that could have. They chose not to. One was able to. I think it's important that Bay Street gets finished. I think, as Counselor Hollingsworth mentioned, that it is, you know, a welcoming, a welcome mat, if you will, or an introduction to our community off the bridge. If we want to entice people to stay in this community, we should make it look as beautiful as we can. Bay Street is ugly. There's nothing appealing, really, about Bay Street. There are a couple of, and I'm talking about the street itself. When you get closer towards the western part of Bay Street, looks a lot nicer with some of the stuff we've done in terms of the hub trail, you know, with the clerk site and the Bush Plain and, you know, the library and such, but I really think it's important for the community that we, if we're revitalizing downtown and Bay Street is part of that, we have a plan, we should stick to it, we shouldn't delay it, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Hilsinger. Counselor Hilsinger?
To me, this, to me, this project is not a roads project. This is, while I understand it is a road project, however, it's very exciting to see that we are finally taking seriously our, our need and the opportunity that's created when we take aesthetics and we do something better than we have ever done before. This project is an investment in the future of this community and will help us build a place that people want to stay in and that people want to come to, with trees and lights and good roads and an environment that makes you want to stay and visit and propels us into this century as we treat our community in a good way. This project is an investment. I fully plan to support this.
Thank you. Okay. So, we have the motion before us. All in favor? Okay, recorded vote, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've opened voting.
Could you, okay.
I've opened voting on your devices.
Okay. So, voting's open, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. So, submit your votes. The, the motion by your arms passed. We'll see how it did by your mouses, your mice.
Counselor Vezzo Allen?
So, Counselor Vezzo Allen was four, Counselor Gardi was four.
Okay, I shall mark them.
Yeah, this is our recorded votes now.
And just for the sake of transparency and to double-check, I have voting for the motion, Counselors Gardi, Hilsinger, Vezzo Allen, Bruni, Christian, Nero. Sorry, Counselor Christian, Counselor Nero, Hollingsworth, and Mayor Provenzano.
That's correct.
Voting against the motion are Counselors Shoemaker, Scott, and Christian.
That's right. That's correct.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Counselor Hilsinger, if I can ask you to take my place, please. Do you need my computer? You can bring yours up and, you know, you can connect to my port. Counsel, thank you. I am home to my wife and my three children. And I will see you all this week, hopefully.
Counsel, while Madam Acting Mayor is getting up to the podium, we will be going into the consent portion of the agenda next.
I'm okay, I've got this one here.
And Madam Acting Mayor, members of council, we can proceed into the consent portion of the agenda. As councils are aware, I have separated out 6.5 as we voted on it already.
Anyone with items on consent? Seeing none? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm like completely shocked. Yes, Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I guess a question to Mr. Girardi regarding the 6.7 ditching program. To Mr. Girardi, if there are ditches required to be ditching that are not on this program, will they be reviewed or completed?
To your Acting Mayor, to Counselor Bruni, certainly the requests have been put in by council. We prioritize them accordingly and will do the ones that we have budget for. If there are some emergency digs, we'll consider them at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on that item? Sandra?
Thank you, through you, Acting Mayor, to Mr. Girardi. Just for clarification, I understand this is ditching. I know that I have some constituents in my ward that have been on the list for a couple of years about their ditches. They're more like at the end of their driveway or on Dowell Street, for example, where it's grass. Does this stop that? Is that, is this the same or is this totally very different from, example, Dowell Street?
Through Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, you may be talking about two programs. You may be talking about our culvert program. And you actually get put on the list there. And we also create a list for our ditching program. And again, we, it goes by budget. So, whatever we have in our budget will be what, the amount of work that we can accomplish.
Okay. And last question regarding this, I know, again, the list, and I'm under the impression that you look at this list often. And I know that there's some particular people that have been on it for more than five years. So, how often do you look and reconsider this? And how do you prioritize?
Through Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, again, it's, if there's some emergency, a culvert completely fails, whatever, and it is on the list, or whether it's not on the list, we'll, we'll address it and make it safe. As far as others, we try and address them as soon as they become a major problem. But again, it's all based on funding.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gardi?
Real quickly, through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Mr. Girardi. So, the report says, and forgive me, I was out of the room for a minute when it, when Mr. Bruni started, so if this is redundant, please tell me. The report said that the money, the $204,000 that you work with represents you, you having the ability to do essentially 2%, 2.2% of the ditches in the community, correct?
That's correct.
That $200,000, Mr. Girardi, is that kind of typical on an annual basis the last little while? Or does it fluctuate quite a bit, or?
No, that's correct.
Okay. I got a comment that I could proceed on, I think.
Sure.
May I at this point?
Yes, you may.
You know what? I, I think it's, it's very important that over the course, and maybe I'm getting confused with the culvert program and Mr. Girardi, you're welcome to correct me. But I think it's really important that over the course of the next couple of budgets, that we allocate a little bit more money towards this. Counselor Hollingsworth alluded to it, there are a number of people on, on a list who are anticipating some, some relief. Last fall, I know myself, and I know Mr. Scott spoke to a lot of people in the west end of the community who are a lot older, who had some complaints about nothing being done in their ditches for several years. I anticipate, I, I appreciate the challenge now, Mr. Girardi, if you're going to get in a couple hundred thousand bucks a year, how much work you guys are able to do. So, know that moving forward, you'll have some, some support with me. And I'm not going to put words in the mouth of my colleague across the table here. But I'm hoping council will spend a little bit more money on this piece of infrastructure moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on 6.7? Anyone else on any other items on consent? Counselor Hollingsworth?
Yes, item 6.6, landfill operations. And, oh, okay, I was looking for Catherine tonight. Through you, Acting Mayor, Madam Mayor, to Dawn, just one simple question. Your team is always on top of new changes, new regulations, and I'm quite aware of that. And I thought the report was well-done. With our new government, provincial government, are there any regulations that you know of, that your team know of, knows of, that we should be aware of, that's going to impact potential budgets as we start to debate to 2020? Are there any regulations that you have heard coming down the pipeline that we should be aware of?
Mr. Mayor, or Madam Acting Mayor, I'm sorry, to Counselor Hollingsworth, I'm not aware of any new legislation that's pending that might affect waste management at the landfill. One of the things that's out there, that's been out there for a while, is the possibility of the ministry banning, or the province banning organics as landfill. So, that's one thing that, but it's been out there for a while. So, I'm not aware of any, anything, anything else.
Okay, thank you. And I know that you would always keep us on top of it. Thank you.
On that same item, go ahead, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mrs., Ms. Acting Mayor. Through Ms. Acting Mayor, to Mr. Elliott, I do have a couple of questions on this matter. You might be able to answer them all in one fell swoop. So, under the groundwater quality, mentions, I think that's, is it 57I had previously appeared stable, but had a slight increase in 2018. Have we done a reading for 2019?
Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Scott, yes, there's, there are three tests, testing periods. We do three samples throughout the year. I'm almost certain we've done one so far this year. We don't, we don't have the results yet.
Okay. And that kind of leads into my second question, which was in regards to the methane gas. So, it mentions that M6 and M7 methane gas wells were removed and replacement wells were installed at an alternate location in 2018. Do those alternate locations also have the high concentrations that have been in the flammable range?
Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Scott, I'm not certain of that either. Sorry.
That's all right. That's everything I had. Thanks.
Anyone else on 6.6? Anyone else on any other items? Seeing none?
I have a motion by Counselors Hollingsworth and Gardi. Excuse me. Resolve that all items under date 2019-06-03, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda and Addendum be approved as recommended, save and accept Item 6.5.
All in favor? Are we voting?
We are voting electronically. Counselor Gardi? But if you just let me know your vote. Are you in favor? Yes. Counselor Vezzo Allen?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Hilsinger? Counselor Christian is not here. Okay. This brings us to Section 8 of the agenda. Under Agenda Item 8.1, Employee Parking, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Bruni. Whereas in June 2017, council requested that staff review paid parking options for municipal staff. And whereas in May 2018, staff reported on various options for paid parking options for municipal staff. And whereas a system for paid parking options for municipal staff could not be agreed upon at that time. And whereas the City of Sault Ste. Marie remains one of the few public institutions within Sault Ste. Marie that does not charge for employee parking. Now therefore be it resolved that council strike a subcommittee to review the report of the May 2018 and further study the issue of paid parking for municipal staff and come to council with a recommendation on a structure for paid parking for municipal staff. Further be it resolved that said committee consists of Counselor Shoemaker, Counselor Bruni, a representative of the CAO's office, representative from corporate services, a representative from the community development and enterprise services, a representative from one of the city's larger bargaining units, and a community member from the public at large.
Counselor Shoemaker, would you?
Counselor Nero has a clarification he's going to ask, but I do have.
Is there a clarification? Thank you. Mr. White, could, could you clarify if, I see this as an action resolution. Is it just going to committee or do you see it as an action resolution?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Nero. It is going to committee. The first operative clause does ask that, that the committee report to council with a recommendation on a structure for paid parking for municipal staff, so.
So, does, does that clause not ask council to, for this committee to come back with instruction to, a structure to implement paid parking?
It could be interpreted as that. I would suggest that you check with the mover to see if there's a clarification that...
I certainly have always supported committees to go and look at something and review. But I see this as an action resolution. I see it as more than an ask to go to committee. And I would not support it in this shape.
We can...
As a point of procedure, Madam Acting Mayor, I'd suggest you check with the mover to see if he's willing to add some clarity to, to overcome Counselor Nero's procedural objection.
Yeah, I, I think from, from a clarification point, if we go with, with a recommendation on paid parking for municipal staff, remove the words "on a structure for," it may alleviate the concern. It's, it's come forward with a recommendation. My intention is to come forward with a recommendation on a structure. So, to, to deal with part-time, full-time, what, what buildings or entities would pay and which ones wouldn't. But, you know, at that time, of course, council would have the ability to vote that matter down and not implement it in, in any, you know, in any fashion to maintain the status quo. However, the, the purpose of the motion is to look at some of the concerns that were raised during the previous council meeting in, in May 2018 and, you know, try and, try and suss out some of those issues that I think were legitimately raised at that time.
May I respond?
Yes. May?
Yeah. I would be comfortable, and I've, I've never voted against something that a counselor would ask council, council to review. I've never voted against that. I think it's, it's incumbent on us to sculpt things out. In this case, if we were just asking for a committee to look at the report from 2018 and report back to council, as most other motions of this, this nature do, I think I could probably support it, even though, in theory, I'm, I'm against paid parking for our employees. But to leave it in this, this state again, it, it, it just puts me in that situation.
Madam Acting Mayor and council, so just for clarity, if, I believe Counselor Shoemaker suggested moving "a structure for" those three words out of it, which would leave you with, come to council with a recommendation for paid parking for municipal staff. In my mind, taking those three words out means there's a recommendation on paid parking. That recommendation be, may be not to implement paid parking, it may be to implement paid parking. It's, there will be a recommendation coming forth from the committee. So, in my mind, the removal of those three words alleviates your concern.
And it leaves it open for council to decide when the report comes back, either to adopt it or not.
That's correct. And it leaves the recommendation open for the committee as well. So, is that agreeable, Counselor Shoemaker, to remove those?
As long as the second is agreeable.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we are dealing with those three words being removed.
Counselor Shoemaker, did you want to speak to this resolution in general any further?
I did. Yes, thank you. Counselor Nero kind of scooped some of my comments there. But I was going to mention that in May 2018, sorry, when this report came back, it was Counselor Nero who at the time said that something this significant should go to committee, as there's a lot of open questions that need to be considered before we go one way or another. Counselor Bruni at the time said that he agreed with Counselor Nero, that a committee made up of management staff and a few taxpayers should be set up to come up with something that would be fair for everyone. And I appreciate Counselor Bruni seconding this and being willing to serve on the committee with me. Counselor Hollingsworth at the time spoke of various facts with respect to paid parking, including the fact that the hospital, at the hospital, both full-time and part-time employees pay for parking, as well as volunteers at the time, is, were her comments. And she said at the time that more needed to be done on this issue. And that's what I'm seeking authority to pursue through this motion. We know through the report that came from council, from staff in May 2018, that there is a range of revenue-generating possibilities from paid parking. This is something that needs to be looked at. And you can look at the paid parking issue from two perspectives, from a fairness perspective or from a revenue perspective. We know, or I think we have a pretty good sense that the OMPF grant will probably be going down next year because of the warnings we've received from the provincial government. The asset management policy that we reviewed this evening asks that new revenue tools be incorporated into the city's asset management plan. And so, looking at the city, there's approximately 1,100 employees at the city, including part-time, full-time, and union and management employees. Charging something, I'm not presupposing here, but charging something like a dollar a day could result in approximately $100,000 in revenue for next year. At the going rate for the public service from other comparables in the community, the revenue generated could be approximately $300,000. So, I don't know what the right rate is for parking for city employees. But I know that the current rate of zero is not the right one. Whether we look at it, as I said, from a fairness perspective or a revenue perspective, I think the two are intertwined. From a fairness perspective, our city employees are well-compensated, they have good, stable jobs, and I don't think we should begrudge them that. But we should also not expect Mrs. Smith in Ward 5 or Mr. Kugliata in Ward 2 to subsidize the parking for city employees on fixed Algoa Steel pensions. There are... There are other public sector—the broad trend across the public sector in Sault Ste Marie for places—and I'll get to the list shortly—is that public sector employees pay for parking. From a revenue generating perspective, paid employee parking can offset future tax increases, can be used to increase our economic development fund, or can be used towards projects that we struggle to fund, like the splash pad or the skating trip. Unlocking the value in these lots means that we are adopting the best practice that is in place at various places, and I'll just name a few. Algoa University charges for parking, Sioux College charges for parking, their employees, this is, Sioux Area Hospital charges their employees for parking, the airport charges their employees for parking, the courthouse, the federal building on Bay Street, the group health center buildings, the doctors' building on Queen, every public service in the Bondar Building, including the OLG, the Ministry of Natural Resources, the Ministry of Training Colleges and Universities, the Ministry of Labor, and our comparators across the north all charge for parking. City of Timmins, the City of Sudbury, the City of Thunder Bay all directly charge for parking, and the employees in the City of North Bay get it as a taxable benefit. So it is the opportunity that paid parking for city employees unlocks for our municipality to reduce future tax increases, to create fairness in not having, as I said, Mrs. Smith in Ward 5 or Mr. Kugliata in Ward 2 subsidize the parking here in—at City Hall and other various city locations. That requires that we take a deeper look at this, and I appreciate—I went back today and watched the meeting from May 2018, and there were a number of unanswered questions at the time, and I think those are the questions that this committee will have a mandate to answer and come back with a recommendation. And it could be that we recommend to move forward, it could be that we recommend not to move forward with paid parking, but I do think that the issue warrants further investigation.
Thank you. Counselor Bruni, did you care to say anything on the matter?
No.
Okay. I have Counselor Vezzo Allen, Counselor Christian, and Counselor Cory Gardie, and Counselor Hollingsworth. Counselor Vezzo Allen.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Tom Verh, who did the report. So while my colleague, Counselor Shoemaker, is talking about revenue model and revenue generation, with any new system comes expenses. So can you please give us a—just a very much an overview as to some of the mechanisms for managing paid parking and what those costs would be?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Vezzo Allen. In our report of May 2018, we did outline some of the costs for monitoring. As you can appreciate, we would have a mix, depending on the scope of this, a mix of parking lots, a mix of staff that would be involved in potentially paying, as well as some of these lots are open to the public that staff park in. So would need to have enforcement. So we looked at options for having special constables that would be providing security and enforcement on those lots, contract by law enforcement officers, contract services to have an external firm also provide parking enforcement specifically on those lots. We also looked at potential for gates on the lots. That was found to be quite expensive, be about $1 million for gates, and then pay and display machines would be estimated to be about $302,000 for all the lots. And as we were tasked originally to look at parking fees at all city facilities, you know, we had provided a list of the various facilities, Bellevue Park, cemeteries, Civic Center, Emmertinger Clerk National Historic Site, the fire stations, the John Rhodes Community Center, landfills, Northern Community Center, Public Works, the GFL Memorial Gardens, Transit, Transit Terminal, wastewater treatment facilities, and the WJ McMeagan Center. So you can see there's quite a list of different sites and different locations that would have to be monitored should we proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Verh. So yes, to be equitable, so that if there is going to be a fee for city employees, you're looking at all city facilities and having a paid mechanism at those facilities. So to further another question in terms of Counselor Shoemaker's comment about taxpayers sort of, you know, allowing city staff to park for free, I just want to be clear and have you confirm, Mr. Verh, that all of our city facilities have free parking for everyone, whereas the laundry list of institutions here, such as Algoa University and Sioux College and the hospital, everyone has to pay. So can you confirm that all of our facilities are free parking for everyone that needs access, whether it's paid work, unpaid work, volunteering, or enjoying the facilities?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Vezzo Allen. That's correct, it is free parking. And also I would note that a number of the municipalities that do charge for parking those facilities, there's a fee for the public to park there as well, in the other communities in Sudbury and Thunder Bay, et cetera, that were mentioned.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Girardi a question, because I think this just relates to culture and retention. Mr. Shoemaker's comment about that city staff are well-paid and perhaps they are. Mr. Girardi, I know that we've discussed this many times in terms of public works, that you do have a aging workforce—I'm not referring to you—
Well, you can be.
And many, many close to retirement age, and that recruiting has been difficult, and not to complain, but I lost a staff member at Big Brothers to Algoa Steel. So you're finding that it's difficult to get entry-level people, especially in terms of public works and waste management. Can you please discuss that with us, make us a comment?
Through Acting Mayor to Counselor Vezzo Allen, that's the truth. I mean, we've all said it here in council, that it has been challenging to try and get people to come and work for the city and finding staff that is experienced enough to be operating our equipment. So it has been a challenge, and certainly we've lost not to Algoa Steel, but to mining companies and other companies. We've lost a lot of employees last year. Was a record of 36 employees had left in total. Probably 14 of them were retirees, and the rest left for other reasons.
Thank you. No further questions, Madam Acting Mayor.
Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Ms. Acting Mayor. I just want to comment, if I could get that out of the way. There's nobody in this room that has more respect for Counselor Shoemaker, but we've had this discussion, and I know what his intentions are, and I respect him for that because he's very consistent and he's very forthright with what he tries to accomplish. I have a problem with this resolution, I've told him that. And Mr. White modified the resolution so that it appears that we're just getting recommendations. But I would argue that really, in order to make an intelligent decision, some numbers have to come back in order to make an educated decision. I do have a problem with saying to city employees that you're going to have to pay for parking, because in my mind, the thing I can't get over is that regardless of their status, they're still city—they're still citizens of the city, and these buildings and all of our facilities are for the public and the people of Sault Ste Marie, which they're a part of. So it doesn't seem to me that they should be paying for parking as taxpayers when the rest of the city isn't. So the flip side of that is, if we're going to charge our employees to park as citizens, then everybody should be paying for parking. Because now you get into a situation that we have employees that park here every day, but what about the developers who are here every second day? They're having—gaining access to the parking and not paying a fee, and they're using it almost as much as the employees are. And what about people from other committees and boards that travel here as well? So I appreciate what the effort is here. We do need to look at revenue sources. This is a good thing to discuss. I guess you could bring it up, but I really believe it's a non-starter. I—we're citizens of the city, they pay their taxes. We pay taxes for—to maintain our roads, to buy city parking lots, which these are, and they pay their taxes as well. If we're going to go down this road, all citizens have to pay for parking, and I'm not prepared to do that.
Thank you, Counselor Christian. Counselor Gardie.
Counselor Vezzo Allen kind of pursued my path of questioning towards Mr. Verh. That being said, I've got to come up with another one here quickly. Mr. Verh, in terms of—in under your report, financial implications, you talked about, you know, cost recovery as opposed to increase cost recovery, and like net loss benefit, could you kind of give us the lowdown, if you could, in that regard, please?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Gardie. Yes, in the previous report, we outlined financial implications there. Looking at cost recovery, when we—we had totaled up as 890 employees. At a cost recovery basis, the rate would be $8.56, potential monthly revenue of $7,600 for the 12 months, so the potential annual revenue there was $91,428. The contracted by law enforcement officers, if that was required, would be $125,000, and then that loss there was $34,569. Increased cost recovery, the same kind of line items there, we had a benefit of $21,393. And so, as the report indicated, there were a number of kind of considerations and permutations that would have to be thought through as it relates to part-time staff and the various forms of employees across the city, and if they would be paying, when they would be paying, what lots they would be paying for, as well as the different types of enforcement to police and monitor the parking. And then we may have some staff, sorry, who, you know, if there was paid parking, opt out of paid parking. So there was a number of kind of factors, would have to go into a full analysis to see if it was worthwhile.
Which, through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, if I may, is what you're hoping to kind of flush out through your committee, correct? Another question through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Mr. Verh. The report that you were just looking at from May 28, 2018, there were the comparator municipalities in Northern Ontario. Fair to say that our civic center is located in a much different kind of locale or location as opposed to some of those others that were cited in terms of the availability of immediate parking on premises or in close proximity, and the amount of it, if you will?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Gardie, correct. We noted that in the report that when we're looking at Sudbury and Thunder Bay, the lots that are used by employees are competitive lots that are open to the public, meaning that anyone can purchase a pass. Passes are sold on a first-come, first-basis, and those buildings are typically—they're right in the downtown and they're surrounded by other buildings. They don't enjoy kind of the benefit we've had here with the civic center and the parking lot that's been established for municipal employees and the people who come and use civic center.
Thanks. And then one more question through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Mr—to Counselor Shoemaker, if I may, and I'm just looking for some clarification, Counselor Shoemaker. Counselor Nero asked for some clarification. We tweaked it so it was the committee looking at whether or not we would have paid parking, and then subsequent to that, in your comments, and I just—I didn't write it all down, I wanted to, you had referenced you were seeking authority for what precisely, do you recall? This was subsequent to the tweak, you had referenced like kind of—I just want to—I just want to be clear that the intent of this committee moving forward is to going to come back with whether or not this is okay or not okay, not just, you know, we're moving forward because—I'm not going to support it if it's—we're looking for how to implement paid parking for city staff, I'm only going to be supporting it as Counselor Christian did, and that for clarity for my own purposes? That's what you're—that's what you're looking at?
Yeah, I think the intention would be to look at the issues that were raised in the May 2018 meeting with respect to, okay, if we're going to implement it, what does it look like? Part-time, full-time, what locations, what not locations? And then from there, the committee will come forward with a recommendation to or not to implement it, so that if we recommend to implement it, a structure exists. If we recommend not to implement it, obviously the current structure is the one that rules.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Shoemaker, for being so accommodating.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Mr. Verh. Mr. Verh, you mentioned all the different locations that we as a city have, Public Works, Bellevue Park, and so forth. Can you give me again just the number figure of how many locations, just number, I can't remember what you said.
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. I just tallied that up. There's approximately 18 facilities that the city has, and this doesn't include other city-owned buildings, the library, museum, police station, Ontario Works staff, et cetera.
Okay, so 18. And does that include historical places like the Old Stone House, because technically we own that?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, yes, the Emmertinger Clerk National Historic Site was included in that 18.
Okay. Another question to you, Mr. Verh. How many hospitals do we have in Sault Ste Marie?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, just one.
One hospital, okay. And how many OLGs, Ontario Lottery Gaming corporations, do we have in Sault Ste Marie?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, just one.
Just one, okay. And did I hear you correctly, we have 18 city locations?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, that's correct.
Okay. So in your professional opinion, I think you said this, but just clarify again, we have 18 locations. You mentioned the different bylaw officers, the potential gates that we would have to install at 18, if not more, locations. Is that correct? Because we're unique, we have locations, and the hospital has one location, which means it's easier for them to monitor and charge staffing because it's one location, just like the Ontario Lottery Gaming has one location, but we have 18. Is, again, you were saying you would have put gates, potentially all these locations, bylaw officers, potentially all these locations are monitoring it? Is that what I heard?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. In the staff report, we did outline the different options, and given the cost of the gates, we wouldn't anticipate that would be a way forward, because we would be looking at about $1 million. But we did outline special constables, contract by law enforcement, or contract services. With that said, they would be charged with monitoring those lots, which are spread out across the entire city.
Okay. A little sarcasm, but last question. Are we in the future looking at amalgamating the whole city into one piece of property?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, no, not that I'm aware.
Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I don't necessarily have a question per se that they've already been asked for the most part. I do have some comments, though, just in regards to this report. It is a thorough report, but the problems that I see with it are just—it feels like the financial implications are lowballing with the rate compared to even just looking at the comparator cities, the comparator companies in town. So I think it could—it kind of paints an unfair picture of the potential. I think committees are a good option coming into this. I was—I was going to maybe suggest that, you know, we pick who would be on the committee, but given it's Counselor Shoemaker's motion and Counselor Bruni's previous historical arguments about saying that we should do a committee, obviously the interest is there, and I would imagine we would end up with the same two on the committee anyways. So given that, and given the wording, that it would just come back with a, you know, a more thorough analysis and a recommendation, be it for or against, but a recommendation as a whole, I think is the proper way to approach that, and including a member of the public at large is a good option as well. So given my questions were asked, those are my comments, and I think I can support that.
Counselor Nero, do you have a question? Or are we moving to comments?
Comments? I couldn't tell if we were comments or questions anymore. I don't know which part are we in.
We are officially on comments.
Okay, comments. Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Well, obviously, because I asked for clarification, I wasn't sure if I was going to go with this motion for Counselor Shoemaker, and I too have the utmost respect with the motions that Counselor Shoemaker brings forward. But based on some of the comments that I've heard and some of the questions and thinking back to the comments that were made when we previously dealt with this, I don't know if it would make much sense or be fair to staff to send it to— if it would make much sense or be fair to staff to send it to committee and spend the time that's required to do this study and review, and come back and have it fail, because that's the impression I get tonight from most of the speakers. And personally, I probably would not support it when it came back, because in the back of my mind, I have a hard time deciding to go to paid parking at this facility, because when you compare it to the others, and not to echo what I've already heard, but the major point is that most of those facilities that charge employees for parking are charging anyone who comes to the site for parking. And I don't believe that's ever going to happen at this location, that we're going to charge taxpayers to pay to come and do business at the civic centre. I don't believe that's going to happen. So, just to make this brief, I'm going to vote against the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Nero. Any other comments? Counselor Vezo Allen, then Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I'm just going to echo Counselor Nero, and while I certainly appreciate Counselor Shoemaker and Counselor Bruni in terms of diversifying our revenue sources, and as someone who's worked in nonprofit as long as I have, diversifying your revenue sources is something that you wake up to every morning and go to bed to every night. But I don't think that this can be done in an equitable manner, and I think we also need to take a look at and respect staff time. And I think having staff work on a different model for revenue generation would be more beneficial, because I don't think that we can agree on anything to make this a fair process in terms of paid parking. So, I am going to be voting against this committee striking.
Thank you, Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. And again, I do appreciate with my councillor mates, Counselor Shoemaker and Margy, but the bottom line is, if we were basically on one lot where it's easier to control and manage, and like the hospital and the other organizations, I might lean towards looking into it. But right now, based on all these different locations, and again, not to just echo Counselor Nero's comments, I will not be supporting it. But again, in all fairness, we do have to continue on looking at other potential revenue opportunities.
Thank you, Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I'm feeling the love from all my co-councillors, who are telling me how much they respect my intentions on this matter. What I've heard tonight is, is that several of my colleagues are presupposing what the outcome will be and voting against that outcome. What I'm proposing is, in fact, one step back from that. Let me look into an outcome, I'm putting my own name forward. Let me do the groundwork, let me do the legwork, I'll rely on staff to bring the information forward. But Counselor Bruni has generously offered to assist me in this regard. This is what we did with respect to city daycares. Counselor Nero, you were on the committee, and Counselor Bruni was on the committee. This is what we do every time there is an issue that needs to be really sussed out, and this is no different than that. I'm asking to be able to work on this, to bring forward and to resolve some of the problems that have been raised tonight, because I admit, there's no easy, one-size-fits-all solution to this. There are several locations, but you know what? The Group Health Centre has several locations, too. So, there are obviously systems that exist to be able to mitigate and manage multiple locations, multiple employees, part-time, full-time employees. All I'm asking council to do is to authorize to do that studying, to let that work be undertaken by myself, by Counselor Bruni, with staff as the resource to help us get the information, so that we can see what the possibilities are. And unfortunately, I think a number of councillors are going to vote against that presupposing what the result will be, and that's, that's, that's the wrong way of going about thinking of this.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Counselor Scott?
No. Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. So, I just kind of wanted to continue on just quickly what I was saying, and I'll go quickly. The only reason I think that a committee is a good option for this is it's giving a fair assessment. I don't think that necessarily, and like I said about the financial implications, I just did some quick math here, even if we estimated 700, which is below the estimate in the report, and then we went with $30, which is still less than most places in town, half, half than some places, you're looking at, assuming the same costs, over $120,000 in net benefit. To me, that's pretty significant, and that's just quickly on the back of the paper here. I think a fair report from a committee is the right choice, not assuming that it goes through, we still get the option to do that, we still get the option to say if we want to implement it or not. I just think that a fair committee report is what I want to look for, and I think that's what's fair to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Counselor Gardi.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I don't think it's going to generate a heck of a lot of money. I think it's going to consume a bunch of time, and I think that between Mr. Nero and Mr. Christians' comments, it kind of encapsulates what's going to, what's going to eventually, or as Mr. Shoemaker said, inevitably transpires, it's going to come back to this council with people who have already expressed their opinion on paid parking. And I appreciate Mr. Bruni and Mr. Shoemaker's position, I just don't think it's the will of this council, I don't think we should have staff spend time on something that is clearly not the will of this council, because we know how the report will be received upon its return. So, for that reason, I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bruni.
I have to say a few words here, because I did second it, but when Counselor Shoemaker came forward and asked me if I would second this resolution, before I said yes to him, I said, "You are aware that I was against the resolution last year." And he said, "Yes, but we discussed about the representation put on this committee, if the committee is formed." It's just going to be a report to come back to council. It's up to council to decide if you want to implement it or not. I mean, we're speaking for 30 minutes, talking about to form a committee. It's Counselor Shoemaker, myself, and representatives from different departments, and don't forget, we're asking for a union representative to be on the committee. Bring it forward, and then we're going to vote. I might not vote for it, but I think it's the most fairest way and transparent. Let's have a vote tonight before...
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Bruni. All right. Shall we vote?
Madam Acting Mayor and Councillor, I've opened it for voting, for those of you who have it on your screens, if you can quickly vote, and then I'll collect the votes from the remaining members.
I don't have it. I vote no.
Counselor Gardi, you're voting against the motion. Counselor Vezo Allen, voting against. And Counselor Christian? Counselor Christian, if you just indicate your vote to me, I'll record it. The motion fails on a three to six vote. Under Agenda Item 8.2, Property Standards, Yard Maintenance and Sewer Bylaw Enforcement. Counsel, just so you're aware, Counselor Dufour, who's moving this motion, is absent. Counselor Vezo Allen is going to move it in his absence. There were also spots for three councillors to be on this task force, and councillors Dufour, Nero, and Vezo Allen have indicated their interest for it. Whereas at its 2019-01-28 meeting, council accepted as information a report concerning property standards and yard maintenance by law enforcement, which outlined various means of reducing the amount of time for properties to reach compliance; and whereas the 2019 budget included increased funding for a second bylaw enforcement inspector to increase compliance; and whereas there is a need to increase enforcement efforts related to the sewer use bylaw and drainage agreements; and whereas there continues to be a strong direction by council to improve the effectiveness of property standards, yard maintenance, sewer use, and drainage bylaw enforcement efforts across the city, now therefore be it resolved that a task force, including councillors, excuse me, Dufour, Nero, and Vezo Allen, as well as representatives from legal, public works, and engineering and building division staff, be formed to review the property standards, yard maintenance, sewer use bylaws, and drainage agreements, and compare with best practices in order to obtain improved and timely compliance, and report back to council with recommendations.
Counselor Vezo Allen, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Unfortunately, Counselor Dufour is unable to be here, he's dealing with a injury to his back, and I had him, because Luke did a lot of background for this committee as well, Counselor Nero, and so Luke sent me a message. A properly resourced and fully integrated municipal building and bylaw enforcement mechanism is one of the most effective ways to keep property values from decreasing. This is definitely an issue, for my short time, and Counselor Dufour's short time on council, that we deal with very regularly, and it's been met with enthusiasm from the other departments in having a collaborative approach. One instance was, we did a neighbourhood clean-up on May 10 in the Gore Street area, and I encountered many homes, garbage issues, definitely homes that are not in compliance, unsafe living conditions, and we also know that Counselor Nero, as well as all of us, are very, you know, passionate about this, and it's definitely something I think that can alleviate who do you go to, and multiple emails and multiple phone calls, and, and having that collaborative approach, I think, will really help in us getting some of these property issues, you know, put to, I think, maybe a better process, and definitely all the departments are willing to, to work towards that as well, in sort of streamlining processes and, and making it just work better for everyone.
Okay. Counselor Nero, do you have anything?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Just briefly, I think the motion is timely. My understanding is that our new bylaw enforcement officer is to start training shortly, very, very shortly. So, I think it's timely, and the new bylaw officer certainly will be in at the ground level with this, this motion.
Okay. Questions, Counselor Bruni?
My question was asked, I wanted to know if the bylaw officer was going to be starting, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none?
I've opened it to voting, council.
I vote for.
Counselor Vezo Allen, for. Counselor Gardi? And Counselor Christian, for. The motion passes. Under Agenda Item 8.3, Fan-Friendly Pricing, GFL Memorial Gardens, motion by Counselor Shoemaker and Christian. Whereas balancing the cost of concessions must always strike a balance between satisfying fans and turning a profit for the concession stands; and whereas a recent trend in Major League sports has been to implement fan-friendly pricing on the most popular menu items available at sporting events; and whereas fan-friendly pricing at Major League sports venues across North America has resulted in increased revenue because it has increased the sale of concessions at major sporting events, now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to investigate and report to council regarding the implementation of fan-friendly pricing at the GFL Memorial Gardens for the 2019-2020 Sioux Greyhound season, and if it is proposed that a fan-friendly menu be implemented, that a review be conducted after said season to determine the success of the fan-friendly pricing.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. More hopefully great revenue generating ideas that all my councillors will love me This is something that has been topical in the news lately with, with various championship games going on, and all the way back from the Super Bowl to currently the NBA Championship. So, the, I understand that our concessions have in fact been increasing their profits year over year. I'm thinking that this is a way to kind of supercharge that revenue increase and, and raise even more revenue. We know that our arenas are cost centers for the, for the municipality, they lose money, so anything that can offset that loss and increase revenues is worth looking at, and pretty, pretty straightforward, hopefully we'll get a report on this relatively quickly.
Counselor Christian?
I think Counselor Shoemaker brought this forward, I'm all for it. I think it recognizes that we have a lot of dedicated fans in the Sioux, and being able to price some of the concessions at more reasonable prices will likely increase sales. It's a marketing tool, and hopefully, when we look at fan-friendly pricing, we also look at, if we are not already doing it, because I don't often go to the concessions myself, but, you know, you're packaging and bundling certain products, and I think Counselor Shoemaker might have pointed out to Counselor Bruni that I attend some of the other stops in the GFL Centre. But anyway, it's a, it's a good motion, and I think we need to recognize our fans and support them in this way. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Through you, Acting Madam Mayor, I guess it's maybe to Tom Ver. Okay, sorry, Brent. It's more of just a comment, can I give a comment, or do you want to stay with questions?
Sure. Let's change it up a bit tonight, because we're all over the place anyways. Go ahead.
Exactly. I agree, I think this is an excellent resolution, and I obviously will support it, but I have attended many different concerts and many different events, and what bothers me, if I may, just as a friendly idea or suggestion, is that not all concession stands during concerts are open. And so, it's frustrating for fans, it's frustrating for people that are there to purchase a beverage, that they have to wait and wait and wait. So, when you look into this, can you please also look into the idea that there are lineups and not all concession stands are open, especially during concerts? And I can give you some examples of concerts I've been to where this was a problem, and it wasn't just me, it was people around me commenting on that, which will technically impact our revenue, because people are not going to wait in that line, even though we may have fair pricing. So, it's going to impact our revenue. Thank you.
Counselor Vezo Allen?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Acting, Madam Acting Mayor, that's a lot to get out, Madam Acting Mayor, to actually our CFO, Mrs. Shell, I just have a question. I went through the 2019 budget as it pertains to the GFL, and from my understanding, this resolution is just strictly looking at concessions at the GFL. So, our expenses definitely came to propose for 2019, we're at just over $2.4 million, and our revenues were at $1.7 million before the tax levy. So, the GFL currently, Mrs. Shell, can you confirm that it is operating at a loss?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, to Counselor Vezo Allen, yes, that is correct. It is being subsidised by the levy, but I think the purpose of this resolution is that they're anticipating the sales will increase, and thus offset any difference in the revenue that we are collecting from the concessions for beverages and also alcohol and the other concessions.
So, with this resolution, would alcohol prices also be reflected, or is it just strictly non-alcoholic beverages and food items?
In consulting with Mr. Lamming next to me, he said it would be all.
All? Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I just have one quick one of Counselor Shoemaker, this is intended to be during Sioux Greyhound games. Is that correct, or is this at all?
Yeah, I think it's to be implemented for the Greyhound season, because I think that's probably when we make the majority of our money, my guess, but yeah, it would be throughout all...
So, all, okay. Okay. Seeing no other questions? Anybody have comments? No? All right. Let's vote then.
Just finishing off the vote, Counselor Gardi? Counselor Gardi?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Helsinger, and Matt, Madam Acting Mayor, and Counselor Vezo Allen.
In favor.
Motion passes. That brings us to the bylaw portion of the agenda. Consideration and passing of bylaws. Motion by Councilors Christian and Gardi. Resolve that all bylaws listed under Item 11 of the agenda under date 2019-06-03 be approved. Is there anyone opposed to the passing of the bylaws? Our closed meeting session, a motion by Councilors Christian and Scott. Resolve that this council proceed into closed session to discuss two items subject to solicitor client privilege. Further, be it resolved that should said closed session be adjourned. The council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matters without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Yes. All are in favor.
And finally, a motion by Councilors Hollingsworth and Scott. Resolve that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor? It's carried.
All right.
We're good? All right.